Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, April 17th Village of Toccoho Planning Board Meeting. Nancy, please take attendance.
Commissioner Neriberg.
President.
Commissioner Barra.
President.
Commissioner Caramella.
Here.
Commissioner Gorman.
Present.
And Chairman Leo.
Present. On the agenda this evening, we have two items, 187 White Plains Road, which is a return, and then 150 Main Street, a site plan and special permit. But first, we need to approve the meeting minutes of March 20th. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion.
A second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm going to recuse myself because I wasn't part of it.
Me too. I'm abstaining also.
Abstaining. Can we see 150 Main Street first, please?
Hello?
Just state your name and...
Mike Lewis. Jake Lewis.
Hi guys, nice to meet you. Tell us about your project. Do you have, first of all, do you have any plans?
I'm sorry?
Do you have any plans with you?
No, not with us. I mean, I do have it on my phone, but we don't have it...
Okay. I can lend you my plan.
You have plans at the planning session.
Yeah, you open yours and...
Leave that.
Well, for the public.
Yeah, but this is a public meeting and the public needs to see the actual plans. So you could borrow one of ours. Can we get an easel? So what we need to do is walk through the plans, show us the project, explain it so everyone at home can see it as well.
Sure.
I'm going to open it up too. I got the floor plan.
Oh, would you like me to come up here?
Take the microphone with you.
Would you like me to begin?
Yes, please.
Do you want me to start?
We'll start from the beginning, generally. Exactly, right.
Yeah, so Orange Theory Fitness, it's a franchise. It's actually almost 1,000 locations open worldwide now. Every location is individually owned and operated, so my dad and I are 50/50 partners. This is the only one we're really associated with, although they are connected in some way. This is the only one that we're presently working on. So Orange Theory, it's a 60-minute class. It's a full-body workout. It's high-intensity interval training or HIIT training, if you've read about that. It's science-backed. Everyone wears a heart rate monitor and you can basically track your results in real time during class on TV monitors. And also, there's a way to track your results and to track your improvement over time based on those numbers that you're actually emailed after every class. And also, there's an app that you can use that tracks everyone, individual numbers. So, studios, Orange Theory Studios, they range in size. Typically, the minimum by corporate standards is about 2,600 square feet. This is 3,275. So it's a nice space. It's not considered overly large, but it does, it will be comfortable in there. I guess I'll put it that way. So basically, there are three stations in an Orange Theory class. It's the water rowing station, the treadmill station, and the weight floor. So it's all free weights. There are no barbells, anything like that. But typically, in a class, it's two groups. In each of the three stations, there are up to 13 spots per station. Although, while saying that, you typically have two groups, so it's up to 26 people. That's the maximum capacity for most of our classes. And you rotate around. There's one coach that runs it with a microphone. There's upbeat music. It's a pretty motivational atmosphere. And yeah, so as I mentioned, you're going to be building lean muscle in there and burning fat. And every day is different. So you'll never go into class knowing what you're about to go through, although you do know it's always going to be high-intensity interval training. And corporate has actually an entire team down in Florida at their headquarters that their job is to come up with these workouts. It's a team of doctors, physical therapists, trainers that come up with these workouts actually months ahead of time. And then they distribute it to every single studio around the globe, and that's how you have access to the templates. And the coaches are trained to coach based on that template.
Yeah. Every class is different, by the way, and corporate puts those different classes together. So the equipment is used every class, but there are different formats and different rhythm, different times. And as Jake said, everyone wears a heart rate monitor. And you see a color-coded screen dedicated to every individual, and it shows where your heart rate is by color. And the whole concept, hence the name Orange Theory, is that you want to stay in the orange for a certain number of minutes during the workout. And then you're guaranteed medically to continue to burn calories for 36 hours after that. And I don't know if Jake referred to this, but it is classes only. Very important. You don't have individuals coming in. It's classes only. And the sizes are typically high teens, low twenties, a number of people, although you do have the three stations, as you can see on the chart, where the equipment is located.
So yeah, that's, I mean, that's kind of the gist right now. I'll just add that it is for everyone. I think that's one of the differentiators, along with it being a very safe workout. Even people with bad knees. I actually personally had a bad knee when I started as a member three years ago. And there are workarounds for any sort of injuries. And it doesn't matter if you're a professional athlete or if you've never used a treadmill in your life. It is absolutely a place for everyone. And you know, the reason why there are almost 1,000 locations open worldwide is it's not because it's a cool-looking studio, although it is. It's because it's helping people. People are, you know, it ranges in their goals from losing a few pounds, if that's what their goal is, to, you know, looking better in a bathing suit on the beach, all the way to, you know, diabetics trying to get off medication. And it's doing that through exercise.
Okay. Why don't you also talk about the acoustical treatment you've done to the space?
Yeah, actually, would you like for me to pass? I actually printed out a report from our sound engineer.
Because one of the concerns is you have residents above, and so you want to make sure that...
Yeah, this has been a huge concern for us well before, actually, months...
A number of copies here.
Well, sure.
You don't have enough.
Well, sure.
Every person, you can see that, get the idea.
So as you already mentioned, we hired a sound engineer. This was something that we were going to do regardless if the landlord was going to be concerned with this or not. We were absolutely concerned with this, knowing that there'd be residents in the building, of course. And this study was actually done almost a year ago. Can't believe it. But anyway, our sound engineer came in and did testing to see, basically, if it was viable, if we could do this, if there was to be enough soundproofing where we can make sure that no one is bothered. And this is the report that he came up with. We had to submit this to the landlord. They had a consultant that was very knowledgeable on this topic. And in the consultant's words, this was a state-of-the-art breakdown in terms of the amount of material. I believe there are four layers of quiet rock, which I've been told by our contractor and when he has consulted with other contractors, I've been told that this is a borderline obscene amount of material that, in our contractor's words, is actually almost overkill. It's going to cost you pretty plenty, but we're happy to do it, more than happy to do it because we're not trying to come in here and disturb anyone. We're taking this extremely seriously, and we just are coming to town to, you know, to help people. But yeah, this breakdown is pretty thorough, we've been told. And we're confident, and the landlord is confident that this breakdown will suffice. We also, actually, there's language in our lease that states that when the build-out begins, of course, the soundproofing goes in first. And from there, the construction will actually stop for just a little bit. Our sound engineer will come back in, do additional testing to see exactly where our sound system, in terms of the decibel level, has to stop. It has to be capped. And our sound engineer, based on that study, will go in and, on our sound system, and cap the decibel level. So that level has not been determined yet, but the landlord will also have a representative there who's knowledgeable on the topic, and they will come to an agreement on what that number is. There's also the issue of vibrations, obviously even coming from treadmills, which causes a lot of vibration. This is to also make sure that that's taken care of as well. It's not just the sound. It's vibrations as well.
So you're going to do everything... Sorry. You're going to do everything that the Good Friend Report is recommending?
Yes.
Yeah, them is pretty thorough.
Yeah, I'm ready, but we'll go through it, yeah.
I should just add, we had extensive discussions with the landlord. We are super concerned about this. So is the landlord. And we met, we had long discussions with our sound engineers, their sound engineers, and literally, they said, "This is state-of-the-art. We're very confident." But nevertheless, we're going to set a limit. We're going to test it as we build and after we build, and make sure that we have monitors on all sounding equipment. And whatever the limit is that we set will never be exceeded.
Okay. So talk to us about the operation of the facility. When are you going to start and when are you going to end? How many people will be there?
Sure. So we don't have our schedule nailed down quite yet, although I'm fairly confident. I can tell you, basically, what it will be. We'll be open seven days a week. Monday through Friday, typically, our classes are going to begin around 5:00 a.m., anywhere between 5:00 and 5:30 a.m., ending our last, our final class of the day, beginning anywhere between 7:00 and 8:15 p.m.
Final class begins at 7:00?
Final class begins, yeah. So to put it this way, closing up shop every night, Monday through Friday, I should say Monday through Thursday, around 9:30 at the very latest, maybe 9:45. On some other nights, it's more like 8:30. Friday, probably last class would be around 6:00 or so. The weekends are a little different. We are open in the weekends, but we'll have more, like five classes on the weekends, Saturday and Sunday, beginning, it's a little bit of a lighter schedule, beginning more like between 7:00 and 7:30 a.m. Last class, beginning at noon, ending at 1:00. They're 60-minute classes. And so we'll probably be closing up shop around 1:30, 1:45 to the latest on weekends.
Just going back to the acoustical for a second, you know, if you're starting at 5:00 or 5:30 in the morning, right, you're going to have potentially 20 people coming into your class. Are you doing anything when people, in essence, congregate outside? I mean, because again, keep in mind, you have neighbors above you. Any thought being given to that?
They'll be congregating inside the studio.
I'm talking about in the summer, for example. Summer's coming. Hopefully, it'll be open, let's say, by whatever, July, August, or September, whatever, which is still warm. So I'm concerned, this is a concern potentially, that, you know, you have a group of people. It's nice out, you know, potentially they want to stay out and chat a little bit, you know, other neighbors above are going to be disturbed. So something to think about.
Yeah, no, I see what you mean. I've, you know, of course, anything could happen.
Right.
And if they choose to congregate out there, of course, I mean, you know, it's not much that I can say to them. But, I mean, of course, I'll ask if they can come inside. But, you know, in my experience, and I've been to over, between 20, 25 studios now in the last three years around the nation, typically, people, it's going to be a nice studio, and people will want to be inside and speak there, get their heart rate monitors on and ready. And a lot of people have questions at the front desk. Your point is valid, and I see what you mean. But, you know, I'll...
I'm more concerned people leaving versus people coming in. Well, if you're coming in, you're going in and, as you said, you know, you want to get prepared for your class.
Yeah.
When you're leaving, if you were the friend or two friends, you know, at 6:00 in the morning outside, and you talk for 10, 15 minutes, it's a different story. You know, something to think about or manage.
Absolutely, sure.
Yeah.
It is a very good point. Typically, especially in the morning, the pattern is they come in, they work out, and then they go to work.
Right.
So we don't expect a lot of that. And also, as you can see in the drawing, there is a lobby area here where people, before the classes in particular, maybe to some extent after the classes, will have an opportunity to talk and mingle, and there'll be some items for sale and so forth. So hopefully, that won't be an issue.
I agree. The probability is low, but something to think about.
Absolutely. And, you know, we also, we're required by corporate to send out a monthly newsletter that, especially in the beginning, I'm going to be doing. I'm going to probably enjoy that. But you can put, and corporate reviews it, of course, before it's sent out. But you can put really anything you want in the newsletter. And one of the items that we'd be happy to do if this arises is just say, you know, we'd love if everyone can just, you know, make sure, you know, do your best when you're leaving or coming in to not congregate outside of the studio, just for the sake of the apartments above. I'd be more than happy to address that.
What is your typical class size?
It's roughly high teens, 18 to 20, maybe 21 or so, 22. That's for the majority of our classes. As I mentioned earlier, the capacity will be 26. I should mention, for the first three months after we open, we're actually not allowed to have beyond 26 by corporate standards. Our coaches just aren't ready for it, and it would be actually, you know, controlled chaos, in a sense. But even though our capacity will be up to 26, in my experience, and I've been to thousands of workouts at this point, typically, you don't fill the room, only maybe a couple of classes during the day, during peak hours. But other than that, it's probably, I've been in classes actually with five or six people, and then I've been in classes that are full. But the majority are in the teens, I would say.
Can I go back to the hours? We haven't talked about parking yet, which is probably one of the biggest issues. But with the hours, you have a class from, say, 5:30 to 6:30. Now, when does the next class start? Because you don't want an overlap, because there's no parking for that.
Right. So typically, although our schedule's not been set yet, studios typically don't have back-to-back classes. If they do, there's, maybe it's a massive parking lot, and it's, you know, the operation's been for a couple of years where they have, the employees have everything down pat. Typically, the space is about 15 minutes in between classes. That's, I would say, 90 to 95% of studios have the 15-minute gap in between classes to, you know, for that very reason.
So you have the 15-minute gap?
Yes, yes.
Do you think that's enough time to get people out and the new people coming in?
I do. Typically, and I should mention that I worked at two Orange Theories last year in New Jersey under different owners for this very reason. I wanted to be as prepared as I could going into this project. And so I worked at the front desk for almost a year. And typically, when people come in, that's when they spend the most time. You know, it's before class rather than after. Typically, after, people kind of want to get out of there. They're done with the workout. They came in, they got what they wanted. And so typically, any questions they have are before the class. So people tend to leave pretty quickly. They may get there a few minutes early, but they usually, in my experience at two different studios, leave fairly soon.
Thanks. Now, I guess we should talk about parking.
Parking. What do we know about parking?
So, well, we discussed this at some length with the zoning board last week as well. And we explained that we feel we've got this adequately addressed. We have designated space in the back behind the building. There are 19 spots plus a handicap parking spot there. All can be used by Orange Theory, 10 of which, however, can only be used by Orange Theory. So we've got most of the members covered in that parking space behind. And then there will be a few, perhaps depending on the size of the class, maybe not. They may, you know, the parking lot may be adequate. But there may be some people who would find a parking space, like across the street or on the street, somewhere like that.
How many, how many spots on Midland, right on the street, the meters, right outside?
On Midland Place, there are 10 meter spots right there. Yes. And they did have extensive, we talked about this last week, and also, I don't know if any of you saw the letter, but we had, the landlord sent a letter discussing the parking arrangements originally with the, apparently it was the zoning board and so forth. I don't know if you've seen that, but he addressed that. And all of the parking for the apartments is underground. They've got a total of 188 spaces. And so we feel pretty comfortable that we're well-covered. And the landlord says the same thing as well.
I think the fear is that some of the parking overflow may end up on residential streets, and we don't want that to happen. So we really want to make sure we got this parking down.
Yeah, we understand. And in addition to that, I should add that, you know, we've already started advertising. And in, I've been in direct communication with a lot of our prospective members and phone calls, emails, and a lot of them have actually said to me that our location is so great, they're going to actually walk there. Or that they're going to take transport, mass transit, you know, buses, that sort of thing. I also know for sure, right now, we have six verbally committed employees. And at least three of those employees have told me, while I was interviewing them, that they actually plan on walking there or taking the bus or the train. And so that will also alleviate as well.
Now, where will they be parking if they do drive?
And how many employees are for each class? For example, I mean, you're going to have two employees, three employees per class?
Typically, two at the, well, I'll give you a final number. So two at the desk, one coach, myself, around four people.
Four people. Okay.
So, and you don't want them parking in that 10 dedicated, so what's the plan for them?
We're going to be asking them if they can park elsewhere. And, you know, we'll see how that goes for a while in terms, I mean, we're going to continue asking if they can please do that. But if the issue arises that they are, you know, paying meter parking and also working, we're going to deal with that as a separate issue. I'm not going to say, "Oh, we'll just go park in the parking lot." You know, that won't be the solution. The solution will be that perhaps if it really, if the problem arises where they, you know, they don't want to work there anymore because they're spending a little bit of money to be there, we'll approach that, you know.
We also don't want them to park on the residential where there's two-hour parking.
Right. No, yeah, we understand.
Is there any way you can have the other 10 spaces dedicated to Orange Theory rather than just 10? Like, can you have all 20?
We tried that in our negotiations with the landlord during the lease, which was quite a long time. We tried to do that. We tried to get all of them for Orange Theory only, and we came to an agreement that it would be 10. On top of, of course, they could park anywhere in there, the landlord blesses, but they, we agreed on 10. They wouldn't budge from there.
Do you know how well that parking lot is used right now?
I, you know, I haven't been here every day, but I've been here quite often recently, moving boxes into the space and that sort of thing. It's typically fairly empty. I've only seen it completely empty a couple of times, you know, maybe later in the evening. But I've been here at all times of the day now, and I typically only see two or three cars in there at a time, and then I arrive.
Are all the spaces assigned spaces for people in the building?
Yes, the spaces, so there's a garage under each respective building. There's a total of 188 spots for the people residing there.
But not, not those, not the ones...
Not the ones we're discussing, which is the outdoor apartment.
Not the ones, yeah.
Those are behind the building.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Yeah, I have actually driven purposely, been driving down Main Street all different hours. And on Main Street, in general, those meters are empty.
I know.
Most of the time. Every time I've gone there, I actually haven't seen one car one time. That was about it.
That's what we found.
That's our observation, too.
Yeah.
And, you know, I'm not from here. I'm from Manhattan, but I have been up here quite a bit, as I mentioned. And that was our finding, too. We, my dad and I actually, a few months ago, way before the lease was signed, we came up here from New Jersey at the time and counted the spaces on Midland, Main, and Marble Dale when we were going back and forth with the landlord on other issues. And we, because we needed to be satisfied with our own eyes. And we went up here and we thought it was enough, based on our experience with Orange Theory and other studios.
Let me ask you, the condo that's being built, there were spots there. Are they coming back?
Yes.
Oh, they are. How many are there?
I don't know. I don't know the answer to that question. Because I believe, yeah, yeah, because there were spaces there before.
Yeah.
And actually, we just noticed today, the scaffolding was taken down.
That's got to be six or seven easily.
You think it's six or seven?
It's a long building.
Yeah.
The condo?
Yeah.
No, 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 the condo, you have E-cap and then that condo.
Oh, okay. No, no, that's probably two or three spaces.
Two or three?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I think he's correct, though. I mean...
Two, oh, two. Two spots.
Yeah. Every time, I mean, typically, we have all the retail further up Main Street.
Right, I think you want to say something.
You want to say something, huh?
No, just two spots.
Okay. No, typically, most of the retail is further up on Main Street, and where you're located is less retail. So we see, I've seen as well, that there's very many times where those parking spaces are empty on Main Street and also on Midland Place as well.
Midland Place are empty, yes.
Midland, I would say, is, when I've gone there, it's simply empty. Of the 10 spaces, there are actually zero taken, from what I found.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Okay. At this point, we're going to wait for our consultant to give us some information, and we'll see you at the next work session and hopefully next month.
Okay.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do you want to open? Okay. I'm sorry, guys. Just one second, please. Is anyone here to speak on this application? So I can make a motion to open public hearing and then close it?
Well, can you continue with the next meeting?
Okay, so I'll make, can we make a motion to open public hearing? Okay. I make a motion to open a public hearing. Can I have a second?
Second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Anyone here this evening to speak on this project?
Yes.
Okay, so at this moment, we'll make a motion to adjourn to our next meeting?
Second.
Okay, great. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, guys. Have a good night. 187 White Plains Road, Concordia.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Joyce Kennedy, and I represent Concordia College. And I'm here to talk about the TURP Athletic Field Project that we've been before this board, I think, for three meetings now. So again, thank you so much for your patience as we work through this project. As an update to where we're at with the project, as you know, we removed the lights. That was done at the last meeting. And on April 3rd, I attended a working session with the board. And during that time, we discussed a number of items, and we came away with some homework to do and some more information to provide, which we now have tonight to provide to you. First and foremost, the stormwater plan was still being reviewed by Dolph Rothfeld. We received that report on April 13th. Jim Cotella from Clark &amp; Companies is here with us tonight, and he will give you an update on that stormwater plan. He and his team had a very productive meeting this afternoon with Anthony Oliveri from Dolph Rothfeld. They worked out a number of the issues and questions and concerns that Anthony had. And again, Jim will get up after I speak and tell you a little bit about that meeting and what took place. The other thing that came up as a result of the BFJ planning review of the site plan was a need for a circulation plan. And the circulation plan outlines the vehicular and pedestrian traffic, where cars will park, how pedestrians or spectators will be moved to the field from those parking lots, and also where buses and things will, where they will be parked during event days. So we have, I actually have a copy. I sent that to Gary earlier, but I do have a copy for each of the members. So would you like me to review this circulation plan or go through it quickly?
Sure.
Or you want to take a minute to read it over, or how do you want to handle it?
You can review. Go ahead.
By me?
You can talk about it, yeah.
Okay. So again, as we have reiterated in prior meetings, this is not a new site project. It's not new construction. It is the resurfacing of almost a 100-year-old athletic field. It's been around since 1923, was used first for football, and most recently for soccer, including men's and women's soccer. We are a D2 school. We are part of the CACC, which is the Central Athletic Collegiate Conference. And that conference consists of 14 other colleges and universities of similar size that we are. Obviously, we can't play against... Obviously, we can't play against, you know, University of Michigan, that would not be fair. So, we play teams that have come from institutions with similar size as ours. So, based on the student demographics of the CACC institutions, as well as estimates of spectator attendance, and as we have discussed in the past, we don't sell tickets to our events, we don't sell, we don't charge to go into the event, so therefore, we don't have any statistics in terms of that. But just based on estimates, historical estimates of spectator attendance at prior home events, Concordia College is confident the parking capacity on the east side or the field side of the campus will be sufficient for games hosted on this TURF Athletic Field. Resident students who attend the games simply walk across White Plains Road, there is a crosswalk there, and they will go from the west side of the campus to the east side of the campus to attend the game. So, they obviously would not be driving to the, to the field. There are currently a hundred and sixty-one parking spaces on the TURF Athletic Field or east side of the campus, providing ample parking during games, and the space allocation is noted on there. We have one hundred and seven spaces at the Meyer Athletic Center, which we call the MAC. We have thirty-two spaces in the Stein Hall Lot, which is the Conservatory of Music. And we have twenty-two spaces that are perpendicular along Rose Avenue, just in front of the field. On event days, two traffic attendants will patrol Rose Avenue to keep vehicles from parking on surrounding streets and on the grass. Traffic attendants will direct traffic to the parking lots located at the MAC and Stein Hall respectively. All team buses are required under contract with Concordia College to park in the MAC lot or designated lot by the college officials. Team buses will not be allowed to park or idle on Rose Avenue. In order to facilitate the safe passage of pedestrians from the MAC parking lots to the TURF Athletic Field, the Village of Tuckahoe, in collaboration with its police department, and we had an extensive conversation about this at the working session, has agreed to install a new crosswalk from the entrance exit of Concordia's Tennis Center across Rose Avenue directly to the main entrance of the TURF Athletic Field. Concordia College agreed to alter its site plan to move the main entrance to the TURF field to line up with this new crosswalk. Priority for the twenty-two spaces along Rose Avenue will be given to coaches, medical personnel, referees, or other officials affiliated with the event. Once those needs have been met, the remaining spaces will be assigned by the traffic attendants on a first-come, first-served basis until those spaces are full. Signage will be placed at the entrance to the MAC lot at the corner of White Plains Road to direct cars to this lot and the adjacent Stein Hall Lot. Signage will be placed at the entrance to the MAC and outside the exit door on the other side to direct spectators, players, and other team personnel through the MAC and onto the crosswalk on Rose Avenue, leading directly to the field entrance. Finally, one of the other items that Noah Levine at BFJ had brought up was the, the installation of a bike storage rack. And in the event of travel to the field by bicycle, there is currently a bike storage rack located next to the tennis center on Rose Avenue and with easy access to pedestrian crosswalk leading to the TURF Athletic Field entrance. Maintaining this bike storage rack in its current location keeps bikes safe, and riders as well, safe, at a distance from any parked cars that may pose a danger for cyclists moving to and from the athletic field. So, that's the circulation plan. Noah and I've had several conversations about this as well. We just talked this evening with Chris, and we are going to make some additional notations on the attached site plan, just to make sure everyone understands where the proposed new crosswalk will be, where the existing crosswalk is, that the entrance will be moved over. So, that's the circulation plan.
I have one question, on the team buses, we discussed it at the work session, will they be dropping the kids off at the field? Or will they be going to the parking lot drop-off and the kids will walk over?
We are gonna try to keep them to do the drop-offs in the parking lot. Sometimes what happens is a bus might show up two hours before the game, which might be before an attendant or someone would get there. So, that might happen, but we will, you know, if someone's there, they will be directed over to that parking lot.
Can we add that to the circulation plan?
The load and unload?
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
I just have a question. In the future, do you expect to rent out the field to other people, you know, other groups that might like to use it?
Well, this plan would be for anyone, us or anyone else using the field, as anything during an event going on at that field. And in terms of the rental, right now, we just wanna use that field for our own, our own use. I mean, we have a men's and women's team, so it will be taken up with that usage pretty much most of the time between practice and games. And particularly now that we don't have the lights, we don't have the extended time to, you know, to have practice in the evening or, or to have games in the evening.
So, you don't anticipate renting out the field? I mean, potentially can, but you don't, at this point, you don't anticipate?
No, we don't at this point, and we don't have any contracts to rent the field out. Okay. And then, finally, the other thing that we talked about, I believe Commissioner Gorman had mentioned this, that we have, of course, materials in the construction of the Comfort and Concession Station, the press box, as well as the fencing. So, we do have, and we also have samples of the TURF, which I think you've seen before, but we did bring in again this evening, just in case. So, we have those materials, some of them with us this evening to show you as well. So, that's pretty much where we were, where we finished up at our working session on April third. I think I covered everything.
Do we have any images of the facilities?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Some sketches of those, which Chris will, will present to you.
Okay.
Anything else on the circulation plan, or?
I have a couple of comments. Thank you for answering or addressing the comments that we made with regards to the circulation plan. You know, we, we feel, I feel satisfied that a lot of the conditions have been met, and there are some minor modifications that we talked about to indicate where the crosswalk is gonna be, any potential signage that you might put in, and loading areas, you know, and anything that you think might be relevant to circulation, where attendance might be located, et cetera. One thing we talked about verbally was that the concession space was only gonna be used for the athletic fields and not for the baseball fields.
That's correct.
And so, I just wanted to, just to bring that up, and maybe that's something you could also put in the plan, because circulation between those two areas, you know, is, is a concern. And so, we just wanna make sure that the concession space is used primarily for, for the soccer fields and not for the baseball fields.
Well, as we did discuss on the phone, we have a small concession closet in the MAC, in the, the Athletic Center. So, it's actually closer for people on the baseball field to go there. That field, when it's not being used, will be locked, so there will be no access to that area. So, therefore, since baseball games are not played on that field, they will not be going in there. Am I saying any, is that correct, Director?
Okay, and if you can just put that in the circulation plan, just so it's memorialized. I have no further comments.
Good evening. So, as presented previously, this is the site plan minus the location of the sports lighting. We have the concession stand here at the southwest corner with two changing rooms for, one for each team playing, and a girls' bathroom and boys' bathroom in the building. A trainer's room for any injuries on the field, which would have first aid, and a storage closet slash concession room, which is essentially like a, like I said, a, a large closet. No food service, no hot food service would be cooked there. It would simply be drinks, cold drinks and bagged items. Go over the information that has not been presented previously. The building would be a single-story brick structure with arched openings, allowing a somewhat indoor/outdoor space, which would allow access into all the rooms directly from a small interior lobby. The brick would match the existing brick of Concordia College, which most of their buildings are a local brick. And it would be a metal, standing metal seam roof with a hip structure. Overall, the, the height to the eve of the roof would be about ten feet, and then to the, to the peak would, would be another four to five feet. Overall, the front windows would be slightly larger for concession on the southern end and for visibility through for the trainer's room. But the windows along the sides and the back, which are for the changing rooms and the bathrooms, would be higher for their sill and maybe frosted. All the windows would be operable for the summer months and double-pane insulated glass. Just to go over once again the layout of the building. Here, you can see the arched openings would be here to a semi-indoor/outdoor space, which would allow access to the various rooms. Structural foundation plan, there's no basement, no crawl space, it would simply be a slab-on-grade and the hip, hip roof structure with two bays for air access, yes.
Heating and air conditioning in the building?
It would be a limited heating, heated building with an air handler, simply to prevent any pipes from freezing and use during some, as we can understand, some cold early spring months.
Where's that gonna be located, the air?
There's a small service closet between the two bathrooms. That would be handling hot water for the bathrooms and hot air for any of the rooms.
And what do you vent out through the roof?
It would be, those, the HVAC would be run through the attic in the roof, through the hip roof. Overall, the, the...
I have a question, can we go back to the elevations for a second?
Sure.
So, what, where do you expect the grade to be for the building, the elevation?
The elevation will be roughly at field level, which...
Is what? What's the grade elevation? Is it zero, zero, just assuming it's zero, zero, right?
Right.
So, what I'm trying to find out, and my question really is, is what is the elevation at the street level on twenty-two? And the height of the wall?
Difference, the field elevation is one seventy-six.
Okay.
And the road elevation is one ninety-two.
One ninety-two.
So, the height of the building is actually lower than that grade change. So, as you can see on the elevation, it's gradual, but as you come to the peak here, we're up about three feet from the grade change from the front.
Okay.
So, you're, we're building into the slope a little bit. We didn't wanna go too far into the slope, because once you go too far into the slope, you're up here and someone can easily climb onto the roof of the building. So, we wanted to prevent that, so we moved the building out a little bit.
Okay.
Sitting the building, so its front side is at field level, and on the road elevation would be up about here.
That's the road, and then you have the walls, well.
And then you have the walls.
So, what's, what's the height of the wall?
The wall?
It's about four feet, three feet?
I think it's about four feet.
So, you'll never see the building from, from driving by, you'll never see it, correct? I just wanted to make sure that was the case. No, you wouldn't even see the roof line? No, because if he's at one seventy-six, one ninety-two, that's fourteen, right? Sixteen plus the wall, fourteen. Yeah.
Yeah. The, the street elevation's about here, the wall is way up here.
Right.
And it's a very, it's a heavily vegetated slope.
And then you have a staircase coming down in that area, right?
We have a stair coming from an existing gate, existing crosswalk here, across Route twenty-two, where there's an existing staircase there that we're removing.
Right.
It's in horrible disrepair.
I know.
And we're proposing a new staircase that comes down.
And what are you building that out of, what kind of material?
Right now, we're proposing that as a, a concrete walk with decorative steel handrail.
So, it would be a walk, steps, or will it be just kind of a ramp?
Oh, it would be steps as well, concrete steps.
Okay. All right.
On White Plains Road, do you have any signs that are going to be put in which alert folks who are coming up the road that there is a crosswalk to heed, you know, the, the, anything of that sort? I, I don't know if the police, I, will be...
There are, there's signage along that, on each side of that crosswalk there. Yes. Here, you can see from this side, traveling north, and we have another image traveling south that shows the signage that you can see.
It's the same thing.
But they're right at the point of the crosswalk. There's no, there's no message farther down or either way to alert people to the fact that this is there.
Emery, that's, White Plains Road is a state road, so DOT has control of those signs, and I believe they're done to their manual of uniform transportation control devices. So, that's kind of, that's a standard signage for them. And, you know, we wouldn't have control over that road.
Thank you.
You have the samples for that, the building?
The, for the materials, I just have the rendering here.
Okay.
To show what materials would be used.
Yeah.
The brick samples, we would be working through with the manufacturer to match the existing Concordia buildings.
I have another question regarding the opening, the openings in front of the building, right? Is there any sort of concern about security?
There would be, on the inside of the building, which would be located in the ceiling structure at each of these openings, would be a roll-down gate.
Okay.
So, that this building could get locked down for the winter months or any long period of...
Because you don't want people just congregating in that area.
Correct. So, all of these doors will be lockable as well.
Okay.
But if there's any concern, or if there's any incident, or if there's any long use, long period of unused for the building, let's say, January and February, they can simply close that building.
Okay. And what about the gate on twenty-two, is that gonna be locked, or is that gonna be open? How's, how does that gonna work?
Right now, the gate is locked, and I'm...
It'll be locked, okay. And just open days of, when you have an event? No, yeah, exactly. Okay. Anybody else, anybody else have any questions? Can we, okay, so you're, you're saying you're matching the, the brick of the base, of the base, of the tennis facility. What about the actual roof? I know it's gonna be a metal roof, what color is it gonna be?
A galvalume roof, which is a coated aluminum, has a variety of colors. We would pick a, either a muted green color to match an oxidized copper roof or a muted gray, something that blends into the background.
We would need to know, so can we, can you bring a sample next time?
Sure.
All right, just what you're selecting?
Yeah, typically, that's selections made further down the road, but we...
But unfortunately, as the planning board, we need to look at that and make the, and agree to what you're doing.
Okay. Typically, the color selections on a roof would be an ARB decision, but we can bring the sample.
Okay. All right, anything else?
The other, the press box?
Oh, the press box, right.
Press box would be here, go back here. Press box is located at the northern edge of the field, where the officials would be sitting on a four-foot platform clad in brick around the same brick. The top of it would be a concrete pad with railing, the same decorative rail that would be used on the stair at the southeast corner, southwest corner. And there would be a small stair along the back to get up there.
So, it's only gonna be four feet high?
Four feet high.
There was some, I saw a video of last month's meeting, and there was a concern, one of the residents asked for that to be moved back in its original location. Just wanna understand the reason why you chose that side and...
We also discussed that during the working session.
I know we did, right.
And my understanding was the, that everyone was in agreement that we should put it on the side where we are proposing it because of the sound. I think, you know, again, we had agreed that that's what we would do, so that's where we kept it.
Now, just, I just...
Again, the, the sound, if you're, if it is, if it is on where, if it's, see to where it is now, the sound goes out towards the residences. If we move it where we're proposing to move it, the sound will go the other way, and really, you know, it's, it wouldn't be a bother. So, I think we all agree that that was the most prudent, you know, position for that press box, so we left it there.
Just curious, how are the speakers, where are the speakers located? Because if you have this, you know, platform where you're putting your, the people announcing the game, where are the actual speakers, are there, where are they gonna be located?
They're on two posts.
Just two posts?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it's probably not any more powerful than a karaoke machine.
Okay.
They're on two posts on the press box?
Yes.
Okay. Like, either end?
Yes. And we have, you know, I mean, as we discussed before about, you know, noise ordinance, we obviously have to comply with the existing... we obviously have to comply with the existing village's noise ordinance, so that would definitely... And in fact, the officer who was at the working session said he had not had any complaints about that, so...
Anything else?
No, that's it for materials.
Any other question?
Open.
Yeah, I'm gonna open that, okay.
We also have Jim Cotella from Clark Company to explain the status of the stormwater.
Okay.
Thank you. My name's Jim Cotella, and on Friday, the thirteenth of April, we received a memo from Dolph Rutland, Rutfeld, I'm sorry, engineering firm, Anthony Oliveri. I contacted Gary on Monday morning to get permission for proper protocol to contact Anthony Oliveri directly. And we were able to do some updates based on his memo and then sat down with him this afternoon for an hour and a half working session to go through all the points of his memo to see if we could get on the same page. I believe he sent a memo to Dave Burke and others after our meeting today. The conclusion was, we had a very productive meeting, and it's my belief, I don't want to put words in his mouth, that we all left and we are on the same page. We're gonna rework a couple of our assumptions and models, the way we do it. We started the meeting by understanding if you had ten engineers doing the same thing, they'd have ten different ways to do it. But given the feedback that he gave us, we've come to some conclusions. We have a little bit of work to do. Our goal is to get the revised plan back through the building department and into his hands by the end of next week so that he can review it before the next meeting, so that I can come here to review with you the updated plan and hopefully have his approval of that plan.
Okay. We haven't seen a document yet, so...
Yeah, we haven't seen it.
All right.
The document was submitted on March sixth through the, through the...
No, I mean Anthony Oliveri's, we haven't seen his, his report yet.
His report.
And we haven't seen it yet, so we want an opportunity to review it as well. I know you had the work session, you're going to make some adjustments, you're gonna resubmit, and hopefully by the time our next meeting, hopefully all the issues will be resolved. So...
It's my hope too.
Okay, so we will look at the document, and if we have any comments, we'll, we'll share them, Mr. Oliveri.
He had a number of comments that ranged from easily addressed things to things that are bigger picture items that we needed to get on the same page about.
Okay. No, have you had an opportunity to review the document?
I saw, I saw an initial memo that there were a number of issues that needed to be addressed, but I haven't seen the update, the letter to David Burke. I haven't had a chance to review that either, so, you know, I think that, you know, Dolph Rutfeld will be the kind of authority as far as stormwater management, but we'll certainly take a look just to make sure, you know, that there's nothing that was missed once we, you know, once we see that memo.
Okay.
I would agree that they have a lot of insight. They, they studied this pretty well. They reached out and got some studies that have been back, done by town of Eastchester back in two thousand and seven. We're gonna greatly improve the existing conditions.
Mm-hmm.
One of the, one of the, but this is only a two-acre site that's contributing to an overall forty-some acre site of the water set. So, if we completely contain a hundred-year storm, it doesn't have a monumental impact downstream. And, but, it's our responsibility to take care of the two-plus acres that we're disturbing.
Exactly. Okay. Thank you. Anything else? From Concordia, anything else?
I do just want to clarify something. I just spoke to the athletic director. In terms of the, any noise going on, there usually is pre-game, there'll be some music played, which is fairly common in any college athletics now. My daughter played field hockey in college, I can tell you that that's what they do every game. And then they do not announce the games during soccer. They will obviously announce the starting lineup and do the, you know, say the national anthem, and, you know, that's it. So, there will not be, I mean, other than screaming if someone gets a goal, obviously, and we're not playing the World Cup, so we don't have to get too excited, but there will, there will not be, you know, noise over those louds, over those speakers, you know, during the course of the game. So, I just want to make that clarification.
Okay, what about halftime? Do you do anything with halftime?
Nope.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yes, I make a, I make a motion to reopen the public hearing, can I have a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Would anyone like to speak on the subject? Hi.
I'm Colleen Thornton for Winslow Circle. I just first want to say thank you to Concordia. They've been very forthcoming in the information that they've been sharing with the residents. I do want to emphasize a few things. First of all is the revised plans. We do want to make sure that the revised plans include no lighting and any approval in those plans, you know, that, just from our point of view. The other thing is the, is the press box. We do prefer it being on the other side of the field. I do understand it's a four-foot platform, but even music on that side, while it is going the other way, I'm sure there's lots of bass. If you, I'm sure everyone's familiar with bass, so, you know, while it may be similar to a karaoke machine, I think, you know, there's still issues with that being right back up to our houses. So, we, you know, we definitely prefer the other side for those instances. And, you know, I, I think, for the most part, I think Concordia has covered a lot of our questions. You know, we're very excited to see some of the parking improvements and some of the other enhancements going on. But I do want to just point out that, obviously, the, the lights being removed, which I, I don't see them anymore, and the press box, again, we would, you know, we prefer the other side as well, so I think that's it.
All right, just, just so you know, as part of the approval process, we'll make sure that, that the approval states that there be no lights installed.
Okay, great, thank you.
I just have a question. You, you're not concerned, because that would be my concern. I live across the street from the Parkway Oval, and I know when the sound is facing us, if it's backed by the, the baseball catchers, which is there, I don't hear it so much. But when it's out in the field coming towards us, we hear it tremendously. So, I...
You may, you know, you may be right. I don't really have FEMA reference. I have, you know, no technical background in sound systems or anything. I do know currently, you know, we, I, I work from home during the day and I can hear that, but obviously, that's going, it's on the other side of the field, and you can hear it coming out, so that might be true. I, I don't know what I don't know. I still think a press box backing up to our houses, you know, we, for a number of reasons, not just the sound, I, you know, I'd have to hear more data and hear, you know, see some concrete evidence on how that would, that would be. I mean, I can hear from our house, the, you know, very slightly, the music in the baseball field, is it a problem? No. But, I mean, I, I think you have a point, but I, I think it's the whole issue of the press box. I know it's a four-foot platform, but, you know, the, the speakers, how high are they gonna be? Again, so I, I think we, you know, the current setup of where it is on the field is, is ideal for us. So, I, I just, I don't know what I don't know, but I think, you know, right now, that's what we, we feel our preferences.
From, from an acoustical perspective, I mean, it's, it's better where they're proposed. I mean, again, all the sound will be traveling away from you, not directed at your homes. I mean, I really think it should be where it is, where they're proposing. It's, it'll be better for you, believe it or not. Because sound travels, you know, as I'm speaking, the sound is traveling towards you, you know, so it's spreading this way. So, I really think it would be better to keep it there. I mean, if I, if I live behind it, I, I would say, let's put it there.
I tend to agree as well.
I, I, yes, I appreciate that point. I, I think what we also would like to see is a visual of, of what this press box is gonna look back, you know, because again, I think if you know wind flow, the houses are sloping down, so these houses will be looking right back out on that press box. So, you know, it, it's four feet, right? So, I'm about five-four, so maybe it's up to here. You know, what else does it entail? How, how tall is the railing? So, I think we want to get a sense of
Sure.
what, what that's gonna look like as well. So, I think the whole aspect of, of the press box, you know, would be good to see.
But you're also installing a fence, a new fence, correct? What's the height of the fence? Six feet. Six feet, so you, conceptually, you're not gonna, you know, you're not gonna see the press box itself, but you will see somebody standing on it, maybe somebody's head. So, you know, I think they've covered those bases. You know, again, we could probably show you what the press, the press box will look like, you know, but I just think if you, you think of the layers, I mean, they're talking about installing a fence, talking about improving the, the greenery around the, the field. So, I think they have multiple layers of, of blockage toward your, toward your homes, basically. So, I, I think they're, they're making, they're taking the right approach.
Right, I guess. I mean, they've done, they're doing a lot of enhancements, and they're definitely being forthcoming in, in, in helping us improve that. So, you know, again, I, I'm speaking for, you know, the residents of Winslow, and I think those are their concern, you know, but, you know...
You also had a good question. How, how high are those speakers?
So, seven feet maximum. Are those permanent, or they'll be taken down? They're permanent, okay.
Let me just say, the sound travels in one direction, and the only time you get reverberation is if... So, if it is intended for, for use in the field, it's going in the correct direction away from the houses that are on Winslow Circle. Sound and light go in one direction, so anyhow.
I do remember that. I don't know the enhanced details, but I do remember. All right, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just for clarification, how far is the press box from the property line from the fence? Estimate?
Twenty, forty, sixty feet, I believe.
I don't know, I don't think it's that much. How much do I get? What scale you at?
The property line to the fence is probably about twelve feet.
From, from, from the back of that? Yeah, what do you have?
Is about thirty feet.
It's thirty feet?
Thirty feet.
Thirty feet.
Thirty feet to the edge, to this black line.
Okay.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Ed Conway, Ed Winslow. Again, I'd like to thank Concordia also, but just to reiterate what Colleen was saying, you know, our houses sort of back up against that, and the field is higher than the houses. Without seeing that press box, is that it sort of is, blocks the view you can see out from the windows to that press box. Assume that there might be a roof to that press box, you know, with the, so there'll be a roof on top of a platform with speakers. So, I think that is looking out at that sort of unsightly. That's what our concern is from that perspective. They're, the Concordia plays music today at their games, and I don't think you've heard any problems from the residents there. So, if it's the same decibel level, I don't think there's an issue. And it's only forty-five minutes a game, and there's only sixteen games. So, again, the residents there really strongly prefer that the press box be on the other side of the field because it's unsightly from that perspective. Again, we have, we, we deal with the music today, and it's forty-five minutes, sixteen games, not an issue, and there hasn't been an issue to date with that. But you get to see that with the roof overseeing, and again, that field is higher than the, than the houses. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening. My name is Amanda Brozi. I'm with the law firm of McCullough, Goldberg, and Stout, counsel for the Village of Bronxville.
Of course, she's talking to the microphone.
Here, and Tim Ho and Mohammed. She's with Frederick P. Clark Associates, the Village of Bronxville's planning consultant. I want to say right off the bat that the Village of Bronxville is not opposed to this application.
Can you speak into the microphone, just to make sure people are gonna stay on?
As I indicated in my letter to the planning board last week, Bronxville would simply like to see some additional information on parking, traffic, and pedestrian movement so that it can evaluate what impacts, if any, this application will have in Bronxville. So, we would ask that Bronxville be provided with the circulation plan developed by the college as well as any further submissions related to parking, traffic, and pedestrian movement. We would also ask that the board keep this public hearing open so that the village can review this new information and potentially comment on it.
Okay. Anyone else?
We'll make, we'll make sure that the Bronxville gets whatever's been submitted here and the new circulation plan.
Okay.
Just one other thing, this, this board is correct in reviewing the materials at this point because part of your site plan review of our code includes that. We don't have an architectural review board, so this is it. So, you don't have to come back for architectural review. They're gonna do it here now, so you don't have to come back for that. So, that's why they're looking at it now.
So, we keep the public...
Yeah, so I, you know, should make a motion to keep the public hearing open till the next meeting.
Okay, I make a motion to keep the public hearing open till the next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, anything else? Would you like to, anything else?
What we'd like to do is get a schematic of the press box, and we're happy to have another meeting at Concordia with Colleen and Erica and Ed, if they would like to do that. We could also post it. I hate to post it until, on the website until we've had an opportunity for you to look at it, but I'd be happy to share it with them, maybe prior to the working session on May first.
That's fine.
That's good.
Would you be ready for the rendition by that?
I, I think what would be helpful as well is if you do kind of a section through the, the back of the, the press box going down to the houses, so we kind of get a sense of what the, the elevations are of the different, different elevations of the homes versus where the press box is, where the fences are, where the trees are going to be, so we get a sense of what this whole element looks like.
Okay, absolutely.
If I could add, I recall earlier sessions, you, you mentioned the plantings that will be provided between the fence and the field. Maybe that's something to bring up again.
That's the other thing, is we gotta take into consideration all the landscaping and the arboretum stuff, and how much that's gonna grow.
Exactly.
And the other thing is, we have a noise ordinance that it must abide by. So, if there's a complaint, we can go out, take a reading, and let you know whether or not it complies.
Okay. Just for my information, the planting, what are you planting back there? And what is the initial height of the, the trees or shrubs?
So, we have a image of the fence as well, which is...
Just put it on, just put it on an easel, so everyone at home can see it. Put it on the easel behind you, okay. Put it on the easel behind you. All right, that's fine.
So, the fence, we're going with a decorative fence. We didn't want to just go with a standard stockade. We're doing a board-on-board fence
Okay.
with a top rail. Would all be made out of cedar fencing, so it would be long-lasting, anti-rot, doesn't attract any insects. That would run along the current location of a pretty beat-up chain-link fence, and the landscaping between the, the proposed field and the property line would be a revegetated natural landscape of native shrubs and understory trees. If you, the view from the field through, there's a lot of canopy trees along this border property line, but there's almost nothing below those, those canopies. There's no understory growth, and there's no shrub growth. So, it's mostly just ground cover back here. So, what we're proposing is a series of Viburnums and Amalankia, which is Chadlo, and Cusa Dog, sorry, Florida Dogwoods, all native to this area and would be naturalistically planted, no, nothing formal, nothing in a row. So, it wouldn't look like an arboretum hedge, but it would provide the same screening.
Okay. Are you submitting a, a planting plan as well?
Oh, we have a planting plan, yes, that's been submitted.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Anybody? Okay, so I make a motion to close the hearing. Anybody else? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everybody, have a good night.
Before we say good night, I would just like to say that we're very happy to have you back on the board.
Thank you.
And we, we look forward to many, many meetings, working together with our community, so... And we, we look forward to many, many meetings, working together with our community. So, thank you, welcome.
Thank you very much. Good night, everybody.